Good morning. Call to order the Board of Trustees meeting, Kansas City, Kansas Community College, December 11, 2012. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ask the Secretary for the roll call, please.
Trustee Ash.
Trustee Blaisbauer.
Here.
Trustee Daniels.
Here.
Trustee Flunder.
Here.
Trustee Maddox.
Here.
Trustee Rios.
Here.
Trustee Townsend.
Here.
Before I ask approval of the agenda, I understand that we will receive a visit from the volleyball team around 9:15, so at that time we'll dispense with the agenda and allow them to make their presentation. Ask approval of the agenda. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ask approval of the minutes of the November 13th Board of Trustees meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nay? Approval of the minutes of the November 26, 2012 combined meeting of the Board of Trustees and the KCKCC Endowment Association?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pause. Audience, the patrons and petitioners, do we have anyone that wishes to address the Board of Trustees this morning? Chair recognizes this young man. Would you come here to the podium? And please state your name.
Good morning. My name is Austin Taylor. First of all, I want to thank the Board for recognizing me as a student. I'm a student of KCKCC. I put a lot of my time within the school. I haven't been here for very much longer. This has been my first quarter. I'm just ending off my first quarter, working on my finals. And I got some news less than a week ago that the Regional Prevention Center might not be here next quarter. So me and a few students, we decided to start a petition. And within that petition, we pretty much, and it was an amazing thing we got to do. I learned a lot from the outside views of the employees of the school and the numerous support from the employees and from the students. And one thing that was really, really amazing to me, that a student came up to me and he was telling me that when he was signing petition, I came into one of the music classes and he, after he signed it and all the other students signed it and walked away, he was like, can I stop for a second? He told me, thank you. And he was like, thank you for doing this petition because I was not brave enough to actually go to the Regional Prevention Center and tell them thank you. Because he was here, he's been here for a year. And his first quarter, he was actually addicted to speed. And he went into the Regional Prevention Center and got information and got some counseling and now he hasn't touched drugs within that same year. And it was, it was amazing, amazing thing. The Regional Prevention Center, it's, it's a place where they help you with homeless awareness, drug, alcohol, gambling addiction, and so, so many other things. And one thing that I was really kind of confused about, and some students asked the same question, was that there are so many other programs in the school, and hopefully I'm not stepping on anyone's feet, but there's lots of programs that's within this school that are not producing results or that are not being, not doing their job, I guess you could say, what they're supposed to do. But the Regional Prevention Center is one program within this school that is going above and beyond their job to help the students and to help the community. Again, like I said, this is my first quarter here. And within this first quarter, amazing, amazing opportunities have been placed at my feet. I'm 23 years old and I started in school a little bit later than I was supposed to, but within this first year, I've had opportunity to work with a state senator. I've got to talk to the Board of Trustees, of course. Got to, today I'm going to be meeting the mayor. So many different other things. I was in the call newspaper my first week of school here by doing volunteer work with Ms. Andrica, and she works in the Regional Prevention Center. So many, so many different things. The doors are opening up for me like I couldn't really believe. And they helped me decide really what I wanted to do in my life. They helped me decide if I wanted to be a lawyer, get into politics, and so many different other things. But beyond just the different stories of the student, the student that was on speed and that's not on, that's not doing drugs anymore, or me personally, that I went to Regional Prevention Center just to get some information for pamphlets. And Ms. Kathy, she's one of the secretaries in there, she hurried up and grabbed me and she had me work with the BSL, it's the organization that they started, Black Student Leaders. And when I first started school, I was homeless. And Regional Prevention Center, they helped me out so many different things where I'm back in doing, back doing boxing, that's one of the activities I did when I was younger. They gave me that balance between sports and education, between discipline and knowledge. I mean, they, they gave you, they gave me those things that's lifelong lessons that you would sometimes get in classes or you should get from, I guess, elders in certain other, I guess you'd say positions within this school, but they filled in that gap. Where if I needed help with tutoring with my creative writing, Ms. Green is quickly there to read some of my poetry. She, Ms. Andric, anytime that I want to do community service, I want to give back while I'm on break, she sends me emails literally every single day. And the Regional Prevention Center is, is just like I said, it's this place where anything that's needed to help students, they make sure they're there for. And this petition that I have signed and I give to the Board of Trustees, these are, each and every student that signed this, even though they're not all here today, they, I'm honored that they chose me to speak in front of you guys, to let you know that each one of these signatures is a voice of saying that they believe in this program. And again, I just want to thank you guys for giving me this opportunity and hopefully this will sway or sway your decision to keep the Regional Prevention Center. And again, thank you.
Would you, would you repeat your name for us so we didn't get it into the record?
Austin Taylor.
Austin Taylor. Mr. Taylor, thank you very much.
May I ask Mr. Taylor a question?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
First of all, Mr. Taylor, I appreciate your coming before the trustees and speaking in such a passionate manner and, and so I first want to say that. But you made a comment that rather troubled me, and so I would want you to clarify.
Yes, sir.
Or be more specific. You said that there were positive results from Regional Prevention Center and that there were programs at this campus that did not have adequate results, as I think you said about midway through. Well, that troubles me as a trustee because I happen to differ in that opinion. However, if you can give me specific examples of failing programs at this campus, I'd be most interested to hear about them.
Okay. And again, I'm speaking as a student.
Sure.
I'm involved within some different programs, but a program that I'm involved within, the Ralph Bunce Society, or that's one example, Ralph Bunce Society, it's painted as a program and it, it's on book, it's an amazing program. It helps you with international relationship, relations, help you with understanding the global crisis and things like that. But what is put down on the Ralph Bunce Society as within this school, and again, it's revolutionary because it's the first community college to have a Ralph Bunce Society, and it's an achievement in itself. But what the Ralph Bunce Society is supposed to stand for, what it, and what it's doing in this school is completely two different things. And then just one other one, because it's a few of them, but one other one, I'm a proud, proud student senator. But when this, when the petition, and I brought up the petition to the Student Senate, to the back office of the Student Senate, it was not well received, I should say. And it's a shame because I believe, and the reason why I joined Student Senate, and it's actually in the notes in my interview, is that I wanted to, just like our motto says, make life better. I want to be the voice of the students. And I've had more opportunity in these, and this petition is only the max of like three days of petitioning, and that's, of course, working with finals and classes. But I've had more opportunity to be the voice of the students just by this one petition than the months that I've been in Student Senate. So, and there's plenty of other programs, like those, that are not doing exactly what they say they're going to do for the students. And if they are doing for the students, the students are not knowing about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Anyone else wish to address the Board of Trustees? All right, moving along. Communications?
I have one communication, a flyer this morning announcing that Mayor Reedon is on campus today in room 2325, starting at 10 o'clock. And he's going to discuss opportunities in technology, primarily, I believe, talking about Google and what Google will bring to, to our city. So that's the only communication I have this morning.
All right.
It's presented by the Workforce Development Group.
Thank you. President's report.
This morning, I'm proud to announce that we have our Advancement Council present today to speak to us. And I'm going to let our board member, who is a member of the Advancement Council, introduce the president of the council.
Well, and there she is.
And there she is.
Pat Bruni has been serving as chair. We also have a co-chair, but Pat has really taken the lead and continues to keep us updated and provide minutes of the meeting and has been a fearless leader that I really appreciate. So there's my introduction, and she can take it from there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Board of Trustees. We're, hopefully you have our printed report in front of you and have had a chance to review that. If not, take a minute while I call the rest of the members of the committee forward. We're going to introduce ourselves in kind of an unusual way, so if you'd all come join me now, this is where you follow.
That's where she leads and you follow.
And I'm going to ask each of them to get, introduce themselves to you individually by telling you how they're connected to the community college, so.
Good morning. My name is John McTaggart, Mayor of Edwardsville. I'm also a member of this Advancement Council. I was asked by Dr. Burke two years ago to be a member, and I have, and I've, I've really enjoyed this time to be a kind of a, as the purpose of the Council is to be somewhat of a liaison between the community and the college Board of Trustees. And that's how I have gotten involved and I appreciate this opportunity very much. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Cindy Cash. I'm the president of the Kansas City, Kansas Community College. Before I tell you why I'm involved, my apologies for running late and obviously my punishment at having to sit on the front row, just like at church, so my apologies. I too, like Mayor McTaggart, have been on the Advancement Council since the beginning. And to me, it's an opportunity to both give and receive. President Givens just talked about a program that Mayor Reedon is going to be doing later on today about Google and the opportunities that this new high-speed technology is going to bring to our community. The morning after the very first meeting of the Advancement Council, after a wonderful, wonderful presentation by Bryden Bodie and some other staff members, I was in a room, a secret meeting room, with the people from Google. It was their very first visit to town. And they asked about our educational institutions. And because I had been a member of the Advancement Council, I had the latest and greatest information about this community college. And that, along with many other factors, I believe, helped Google make the decision to come to Kansas City, Kansas first. I will also tell you that I work quite closely with Marissa Gray and Jay Matlock from your Business Development Center. These are two folks that have come on strong over the last couple of years. And we've partnered together with, with the Chamber, with the Kansas Small Business Development Corporation, as well as YN dot Economic Development Council and other organizations throughout the community to try and provide both training and entrepreneurship skills to the community. And I appreciate their efforts and the support of the Board on that. And finally, I live here in Kansas City, Kansas, like everybody else. I pay taxes, and I think that it's important that I, as a citizen, know as much as I can about the community college to spread the word. And also to bring comments back to the community college, which I've done in the Advancement Council setting, as well as to you individually, sometimes over lunch or over coffee or informal meetings. Thank you for the time to express my belief in the Advancement Council.
Don't laugh at me.
Good morning. I think most everyone in here knows me, but I'm Lynda Pendleton, and I'm currently the Vice President of the Kansas City, Kansas Board of Education, but I'm also retired supervisor of Human Resources here at the college. And it has been my honor and privilege to serve on the Advancement Council since its formation two years ago. And I really enjoy being able to work collaboratively between the school district and the college toward better education in KCK. Thank you.
Rich Rasdell, President of the Endowment Association here at the college. I'm very proud of my long association with this college, first as a student and subsequently as a volunteer. I also very much appreciate the opportunity to be a member of this council because of the opportunity that it provides as we attempt to fulfill our mission as a communication link to and from the community with the college.
Good morning. Rich Ayers. I've had a pleasure of serving on this council. My connection with KCKC has been several different venues. Had two daughters that went to school here back in 1986 and 1990 and moved on and were prepared to go and get their bachelor's and master's degrees from here. Also, I've, I've been a student here at the community college, a senior student, and I'm in the senior class. But I've been in the music, had some music courses and also at the Wellness Center, participated there, and also helped with their 5K, the annual 5K that they do here on campus. Also, I've, as Cindy stated, I've a retired UG employee with the Workforce Development Coordinator. I've had the opportunity to work here with the Workforce Development Group, which has been a very good experience. Lastly, my wife has been a teacher here for 10 years, adjunct in the math department. She's also served 30 years with the Public School District. So each semester, I've gotten to know about 60 students, and that's really been an interesting, also a challenging thing to listen to some of her challenges that she has here, but it's, it's really been a wonderful thing to hear, coming from the lips of a teacher that works here on a daily basis. So appreciate all the work that you're doing here, and I appreciate being able to serve on this council. Thank you.
My story of connection is a little different and maybe a little more personal. First of all, I have a niece who's in her first semester at Baker University, graduate of Sumner Academy of Arts and Science. But she's technically classified as a second semester sophomore because of the coronavirus hours that she took with her from this university, this college, to Baker University. Secondly, our family lost a younger sister in 1993, and the way I was able to encourage my father to come back out of the house after that experience was, we enrolled in a class here at the community college. We enrolled in the history of YN dot County, and you would think those of us that are older than dirt would already know that. But it was a very healing way for us to come outside, see the world again, and learn something new. And lastly, my mother's grandfather was Clarence Williams. Some of you may know this already, some of you may not, but he founded the School of Mortuary Science. He was the original owner of the School of Mortuary Science. He was one of the best-known morticians west of the Mississippi in his day, which was obviously a day or two ago. And I found this interesting because just yesterday I saw on the online Kansan that you all, that the college has an online reference tool called the Morg, which has had 9,000 individual visitors thus far. Whether we like to admit it or not, that's a necessary skill, and my family is very linked to this, this college because of that. Hopefully, you've reviewed our report, you've seen our progress over the, over the two years that we've been working. We did take a little sidestep from our original intent, and we got involved in the selection of Dr. Givens. That was good, and now we're back on point. I would call your attention particularly to the last paragraph of the report. We would really like your support and, let me pause for a minute and say, Wendell and Kathy Bridenthal have just been steadfast in their support of our work as a committee, and we couldn't have done anything without their participation. And Dr. Givens has attended as many of our meetings as possible. We have plans for the future. We want your support in these plans, and we want your approval of these plans, I guess, in some respects. We would like to, we're a follow-up to your original listening project. We would like to participate with you in one of your strategic planning goals, and that is to do a sequel to that listening project. We'd like to be part of that process. We'd like to have a community event where we can bring people together to say, we ask you, in the original listening project, we heard what you said, we have reviewed the basic things that you talked about, what do we do next? And then through that community event, possibly get some more hands to help. And we'd like to be part of any electronic initiative that you, that you start from this point forward to communicate with the community. Google Fiber is an amazing opportunity, and there are free tools out there, and we'd like to, to work with you to figure out the best way to do that. That's the report. At this point, are there any questions that you have for us? Because all these guys behind me can answer anything you want to know. It's a sign of a good report, isn't it?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Ms. Bruni, thank you very much for your report, and thank you so much for bringing members of the Advancement Council with you this morning. I think it was very interesting to hear the connections and the ties to not only the college but to the community. And rest assured that we will continue to support you, and we are looking forward to the engagement, the future engagement, as you described it this morning. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd like to add that this group is steadfast. They're at their meeting on time. If I'm five minutes late, they've already started the meeting. They have ideas that they share, they, they work together collaboratively, and it's a really positive voice for what goes on at the college. Many of the administrators and other staff members at the college have gone to the Advancement Council meeting to share information about what's going on at the college so that they can be well-informed and share that in the community. And I thank you for your service. Like to remind the Board that you have two engagements, one Wednesday and one Thursday, and both of them are fun, and I included those in my letter. This morning, I mean, this week, last Friday, I was inducted into, on the Board of the Freedom School here in Kansas City, and I'm excited about that opportunity to be on that Board to, to work with K-12 students in a different way in their summer program. So I'm excited about that opportunity. And that's my report.
All right. Thank you, Madam President. Personnel. Leota, are you going to present this? Okay.
Morning.
Morning.
Good morning. Morning.
This morning, I would like to present two policies to you for first reading. The first policy is the Early Retirement Plan. And I would like to pause here to say, there has been a correction to the one that you received in your Board Pack, and you should have received a, a sheet or a copy that had this cover sheet on it, Early Retirement Plan Revised Copy. And that's the one we're going to use. The reason this has been brought to you is that in the last faculty negotiation, the expiration date for the Early Retirement Plan changed to 2015. And so we needed to make that change over in the policy handbook. And there were also a couple of other clauses which were in the master contract that were not in the policy handbook. So we've added those into, in the red, red print. So the plan itself is not changing, there's nothing about the plan that's going to change. This recommendation is being made to you basically to get consistent with what is in the, in the master contract. And then the second policy is the minority contracting procedures, and this policy's being recommended by Brian, and I'd like to ask him to speak a little bit about that.
Thanks for the warning. I think it was about four months ago that I brought to the Board proposal for a, for a minority contracting policy. I met after the last Board meeting with Kathy and Wendell. We went through it, we incorporated all the notes we had from the first meeting, and they made a couple more suggestions, changes, and we have included those there. It's a red line, or I guess this one is a blue line, correction model. And it is our proposed requirements to try to reach out and touch the minority and the women-based enterprise in our contracting basis. And we talked about a $100,000 limit, we do have that. But we also talked about the ability to split that into smaller pieces. If the whole project or the whole year may be $100,000, but we're going to do it $10,000 at a time, maybe we need to do it that way. And that's what this policy does. And it provides a way that if a, a general contractor and/or a construction manager or something like that would get the fit, we're going to make them provide to us their minority or women-based plan, and then we will hold them to that plan. And it, but it's our way that, one of the things that you brought to us, has a need to reach out more to that, to that constituency. And we, we think this policy does that.
Brian, does it include supplies?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
We heard you.
Has the policy been reviewed by legal counsel?
Yes.
Any comments by legal?
No, Trustee Rios, ready for your first read, and is consistent with what the Board had discussed in prior meetings.
Question for legal. Is this the, at what point in this process are we allowed to make comment or recommend, recommended changes?
It's to you now, Mr. Chairman, for first read, and you can actually begin to make them now. Your policy says it comes back for a second read, and you can make them then as well. This is an opportunity for you to get an overview of the proposed policy, to discuss it amongst yourselves as trustees, and, and then, of course, you can make and recommend, recommend changes up until the time you take final action, sir. changes up until the time you take final action, sir.
Well, I do have one recommendation on the Early Retirement Plan, and it's in the paragraph that starts with compliance. The last sentence says, "Where used under this policy, the board refers to KC-KCC." I would like to extend that out to Board of Trustees of KC-KCC. Any other comments or recommendations?
Yes, sir, I think that all that, there are many places in the whole policy book where we just say "the board," and I think this definition is just to make sure that everybody understands that if we just use the word "board," it does refer to everybody. This is a qualifier in the policy, because in the whole policy handbook, there's probably 150 places where, as opposed to writing "the Board of Trustees," we have written "the Board." And so this is just a qualifier for this. I don't know that changing that to Board of Trustees is a need.
And also, sir, in the master contract, the very first page gives you the definitions, and that when we use "board," it means "Board of Trustees."
Oh, okay, thank you. I withdraw my recommendation. Any other comments or recommendations? All right.
Thank you.
The demographic report?
Yes. You received some reports about the demographics of college employees for the years of 2010, 11, and 12. And this information has been provided to you to inform you of how we're made up here at KC-KCC. And I really want to give a big thanks before going any further to Dr. Sankey Man and his staff in the Research Center. They really helped me a lot with, they're the ones that have all this information, pull it together, and help us to see it in a way that makes sense to us. So I just have a copy of one of the slides you have, the fall, you have slides for fall 2010, 11, and 12, and it's called 2010, 11, and 12 Details Report. It looks like the one on the screen. Those reports give specific race and ethnicity information about groups of employees for the last three years. The next...
Can I ask?
Yes.
Just a chairman.
Yes.
Okay, I know you just got this one up there. Are you going to go through each one of these?
Yes.
Oh.
Well, each of those three that are all alike, each of the details reports, is that what you're asking, or each of the slides? Each of the graphs?
Your next, okay, go on to the next one.
Okay. The next one is the diversity data comparison of fall 2010, 11, and 12. And this illustrates the numbers of employees in race and ethnic groups, and what percentages they make up in our workforce. The largest percentage of our employees are white, and that has been for the last three years, 2010 through 12. The largest minority group are black for all three years, and the next minority group in size is Hispanics. There has been a slight decrease in black and Hispanic categories in the last two years.
Yes, and what do we attribute that to?
I'm not quite sure that I can answer that question. There's only been a slight fluctuation. May just be a difference in employment numbers.
There have, there's been an increase in the number, but percentage-wise, it has declined.
Correct.
And that would be my concern, that we can say we have more black and Hispanic employees than we've had in the past, and yet they do not make a greater percentage of our new positions. In other words, we've added positions. We have more positions available than we've ever had. We're not filling them to close the gap and making a gain of having more representation of minorities in our staff. And I'm a little baffled by that, and I'm just wondering if we have, the numbers are one thing, but really, why the numbers are what they are is the most important thing, so that we can learn from that, and hopefully, as a board and then as a staff, be able to make some inroads. I'm assuming that is our...
Yes. And we are working, we are always working toward that. We do have an affirmative action plan, and that, there are many steps that we take to recruit and to do our best in hiring and retaining minorities and women. One is the way that we advertise, and that in all of our advertisements, we list that we welcome minority applications, that we're an equal opportunity employer, our interviewing teams are diverse, they are trained. We recently had a supervisory training, and we covered this topic. And we also are consistent in our interviewing as far as questions that are asked. And we have had some situations this recently as this year that we have taken affirmative action to hire minorities into some positions. So it is not going unnoticed, and we are working on it.
I have a question.
Yes.
Okay, when people of color apply four or five or six times, and they not accepted, Leola, they get disgusted and discouraged. When I ask people, "Apply for this," what they tell me is, "I did that three other times when you asked me to do that." I didn't even get an interview. So it is something missing, and something needs to change. The school district, we are, in our school district right now, we are, we're over 50%. We're 60, what, 68% of students are of color, either Mexican-American or black. We got to hire people that look like them, and we think that we're going to be as successful because people, some people can and some people can't as far as teaching, because it's something that's grown up with you. But when people apply several times, they still don't receive no job, they don't even get an interview, it makes me wonder, too. And when I looked at this, I was heartless. I'm like, this went up the last three years instead of going down. We met before, we said we was going to do better, we're doing worse. So I am not pleased with it. We need to bring in somebody from the outside to do our diversity training, not on the inside. We are not, we are not, we're not going to be ready for those students at all at the rate we're going. And if I could have my really way, I would hire more people from Wyandotte County. Just the book is, and these are Wyandotte County residents who pay taxes, so that's the other thing, that the, what's the name? I brought it this morning, and now I can't find it. But anyway, the book that has all the employees in it, have you, have you looked at that and seen how many are Wyandotte County residents?
Yes, I have, and we advertise everywhere when we have positions. And the hiring process is a very competitive one. But we have not, we have policies against discrimination. We always want to hire the most qualified applicant. And so that's what we're looking for.
Do we always do?
Yes, I believe we do as, you know, a general rule.
State is saying?
And as I said, there've been a couple of situations this year where we've taken affirmative action in the hiring of some employees that would not probably have otherwise happened, because we realize that we, you know, need to work on this. So, but we still have to keep in mind that we have to hire the most qualified people.
When are we going to get a new book?
What is that, the address, the phone book? We're not printing that book anymore. We have the employee addresses on our portal, because a lot of our employees were, did not want their personal information in the book. So we, you know, it got to the point that we just are printing the information on the portal.
Mr. Chairman, I want to say a little bit different thing. I want to thank the Human Resources Department for the effort you're making, anyway. Every college in the country is struggling with this issue right now of how to find more minority staff to teach, work in colleges, school districts, everywhere. This is a major issue that we're facing in this country, and I think it's one of the things that, Dean Marks, you've always brought to us, you're aware of the situation, and I think your group is working hard to do that. It's probably going to be something that we need to get more active about preparing people to do this. School districts and community colleges and four-year universities really need to make a strong effort to recruit and then employ and maintain high-quality minority candidates who can come in here and do a great job with the rest of our staff. So, you know, it's not the numbers we want to see. I mean, I know you're not satisfied with those numbers, you've heard the board's not satisfied, but I don't want to say that you're not doing your job, and that you're not working really hard to get this done, because I know you are. And it's something I think we all need to take responsibility for, and all continue to be aware. And I thank you for bringing it to us. I mean, you're not sweeping the front of the rug, you're not saying, "We're doing a good job." You're saying, "We have struggles, and we're working at it." So I just want you to keep up the good work, and I think we all, as a board, we're aware of this issue, but this is a national issue that everybody is facing, and I frankly think we're making a good effort at it, and hope we get better.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, this slide is the employee categories slide, which gives us information about what groups of employees are. The total number of employees has gone up 80, by 80 since 2010. The category that increased most was part-time staff, increased by 39. The next highest group was our adjuncts, increased by 30. Full-time faculty increased by three. Full-time staff increased by seven. Administration decreased by one. So overall, the growth in our hiring has been in the part-time categories for staff Now I want to talk about the gender data. For the last few years, I don't think it's any surprise to anyone that most of our employees are female. This chart represents by gender, there are more females than males for the last three years. In 2011 and 12, we had more white females than white males, and more black females than black males for all three years, and more Hispanic females than Hispanic males. So the females are dominant in all of the categories.
Y'all just saying ourselves.
Female that run, they run the country now.
Women in the whole world.
We run the country, then we'll be all right.
All right, oh, wait till 2016, huh?
Well, just note that the board did vote for a female and for a black, too.
She's 100% in her category. She's black female and Baptist.
Leola, I have one question, back to the categories.
Yes.
On the increase in part-time staff.
Yes.
What's the distribution across campus? You have any idea where most of those part-timers went, are located?
Most of that is probably in my area, part-time police officers, part-time custodians, part-time maintenance and grounds people to add the flexibility to be able to call somebody in and do that, especially in campus police officers, to have a certified officer. I think we've increased the number, not that they all work every day, but that we have the ability to call down a list of officers that are available to cover short periods or to add reinforcing to a situation or whatever. So most of those, and then custodial also, to, so we have flexibility.
Thank you.
We also, since we merged with the Technical Education Center, they hire part-time lab assistants in most, for most of their programs, and that's been a new position that we've added on in the last couple of years. So I think that's, that's an area where we probably have at least maybe 10 or 12 people, new people that have been working over there. by organizational structure, and this represents full-time employees only, this report. It's a breakdown of non-minority and minority male and females by location, division, and department. And one of the things that I noticed in this report is that there are some areas where there are high concentrations of females working in some departments, and there's also some where there's high concentrations of minority and vice versa. We believe this information can help us, you know, as I mentioned before, as we are taking the affirmative action to, you know, make sure we have as much diversity as possible in our employment here at the college.
Dean Marks, does the dean council review this?
They have received it in the past, they have not received this updated one.
I'd be interested in the dean's council review, and perhaps they could shed some light, you know, why the concentrations, how we might be able to encourage, I guess will be the word I'll use at this juncture, you know, more applicants, more interest in the various departments, fields. And I think having them more, more aware, more cognizant, and perhaps buying into the necessity of having a diverse workforce would be beneficial, exercise this in and of itself. And then if you could then be the liaison, so to speak, to bring back to us what the dean's council shares about their perspective on this, I think would be a good thing.
Be glad to, thank you.
Dean Marks, is this based on this year's staff?
Yes, it is, it's current. That's the end of... That's the end of my report, unless there are any other questions.
Can I ask you a question about the different positions that we have open right now?
Ah, sure, I'll try to answer them.
Okay. On that, on that grant writer position?
Yes.
This amount of money is not gonna track what we're really looking for, to me, because we don't have, we, we need a grant writer, and I was the one that brought that up a long time ago, but we need a person that we give an incentive to, you know, we could give them a base salary and then fifteen percent of what they bring in.
They do get a percentage of the grants, up to $10,000, I believe, yeah.
Yes.
Up to $10,000. They get three percent of.
It's, it depends on the nature of the contribution of the grant writer, but the maximum, depending on the amount and the contribution, the maximum the individual can receive is $10,000. Per grant.
They can receive $10,000 per grant?
Yes.
In addition to the salary.
And we have gotten people, okay, all right, I just, you know, a good grant writer can make you a break in. In the meeting that we had last week, a week before that, whatever it was, with the endowment, they only want to deal with scholarships. So, we need a grant person that's gonna bring some money into this school so we can keep going and add new things, because IT is constantly changing every day. So, if we're gonna do that, we gotta have persons that, and I hope y'all look at this, whoever this gonna be, to, to already know how to research and, and put it together, do all the getting together of it, and not just waiting and on that, whatever department that is to bring that information to them. They can help, but they gotta be a self-starter and get out there and get it.
We are going to, in our screening and, and selection process, be looking for that type of person that's going to, you know, be aggressive and, you know, like you said, that we'll be looking out for the best in college.
Dean Marks, thank you very much for your report, it's an excellent report. We appreciate your work.
Chairman, let me, let me just commend her for doing the job that she's doing at this time and what she has to work with, and make, make sure, I would like to make sure that the president is involved in all of this, looking for whatever you got to have, that the president is part of bringing the plan to the table. I don't want them to go by her, but go in there where she's at so she can have her input also.
Thank you, trustee.
Thank you.
Okay.
Do I need a motion to accept Mrs. H.R.'s report, Mr. Chairman? If so, I'll make a mo, a motion that we approve the report that's the H.R. just made.
Second.
It's been moved to second that we accept the employee demographic report as presented by Dean Marks. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Second? I'm sorry, opposed? It's my first time doing this. All right, thank you, Dean Marks.
You're welcome.
Item 7A.
Yes, 7A for your information, 7A, one through seven, and for your approval, please, 7B, one through 12.
Move approval of recommendations, one through 10.
Second.
It's been moved to second to accept item 7A and B.
One through 10.
One through 10. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
On item B11.
We're not accepting.
With, with regret, I move approval of item B11.
It's been moved to accept item B11. Do I have a second?
Second with regrets also.
It's been moved to second to accept item B11. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No.
Thank you.
All right.
What happened to 12?
I don't see 12.
What, what happened to 12?
Oh, we have to do B12. We haven't approved it. Move approval of item B12.
Second.
Hold on a second. I, I wanted to ask Dr. Aga Jafar if she had any comments this morning that she would like to make before we move along.
Well, thank you very much. Just to say that it's been an incredible 26 years, and I am very, very thankful to the college for keeping me on for 26 years and for giving me the opportunities that it has given me, and I have loved it. It was a very, very difficult decision, but I feel it's time for me to move on. So, thank you very, very much.
Dr. Aga Jafar, I'm not gonna try to speak for the board, I'll speak for myself, that it's been a pleasure working with you.
Thanks.
In the short time that I've been here, I've been just overwhelmingly impressed with your abilities and your skills and, and the way that you have positioned this institution for further growth, and I personally appreciate that. Anyone else like to make a comment?
Well, I'm, I'm gonna keep in contact with Tamara on women's advocacy issues because she's been a strong women's advocate, going back to, to when you, you had the Women's Studies program and things you've done in the community, and, and we're gonna be calling on you.
Yeah, I'd want to thank Tamara for the work you actually did outside the college. I remember when you were working with the school district around some ESL issues, and appreciate that we were of what you brought to the district. So, you've done such a fabulous job here at the college, but I don't think we need, we should overlook the work you did in the community, working for education and young people, and, and some of us older people, too. So, thank you very much for everything you've done for this community.
Thank you, Ted.
I've set mine to her this morning, so she knows how the hell I feel.
How the hell do you feel? Anyone else?
When Dr. Aga Jafar gave me her resignation, I mean, her retirement, her request, her letter in requesting retirement, I said to her, as we had discussions later, that we'd probably be looking for three or four people to replace her, that one would not be enough. She will certainly be missed in her contributions, her untiring work. I understand how she took tasks on and, and completed them and how she has really assisted a great deal in putting this college on the map, not only locally, but statewide and nationally in what she's doing with the HLC. So, know that your work has been appreciated, and there'll be much discussion about trying to find somebody not to replace you, but to fill the position. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Very well said, very well said. Dean Marks, do you have any comments about item 7B12 before we ask for a motion?
I wonder what that is.
Sub motion for approval of item 7B12?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve item 7B12. All in favor?
Aye.
Second? Opposed? Item passed. Bear with me for a second. Vice President of Academic Affairs, item 8.
Thank you very much. The first item is the academic calendar. You have a revised version for the 2014-2015 calendar, the book buyback date, we had, we got it down wrong. We work on developing the academic calendar with representatives from the faculty, and we have done a three-year calendar, and we formed a committee, worked on it, you know, met several times, and I submit the three years for your approval. Be happy to answer any questions you may have on it.
Move approval of academic calendars, 10-13 through 10-16.
It's been moved a second to accept the academic calendar. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Tamara, I think I'd, any significant changes, or is it pretty much what it's always been?
It's always been this way. The only significant change is at the end of each academic calendar, if you look, the meeting times for evening classes. We are required to meet 750 minutes for each credit hour, and in the past, what has happened is that in order to meet that in the daytime classes, we've had an occasional evening class once a semester that meets three hours more than it should. And so, faculty requested that we adjust an evening class whenever that happens and just meet for the right amount of time, and we were able to accommodate that.
Thank you.
That is the only change.
Okay, is it, is it 2014 and 2015 and 2015 summer?
It's in your packet.
This is the one I got out of the packet. So, where is it, three years?
It's, it's in your folder, ma'am.
2013, 2014.
That was, this one is the corrected one, and the others are.
The one that was in this packet right here is the correct.
Yes, but that's just.
This is no good.
No, that one.
It is good.
That has a correction.
Okay, how do, how do we get three years?
13 and 14.
Oh, 13 and 14 is in the packet?
Yeah.
Okay.
There was no correction.
All right.
All right.
I know I ain't crazy.
Are we good?
Yes.
All right. Next item, shall I move on? You have a copy of the Dean's Council newsletter. If you recall, we started this a couple of years ago, and we do it every semester, once a semester, and the Deans contribute, and it is posted on the portal, so everybody can read it. And basically, we, you know, we feel it's a good idea and we think it has helped communications across the board. I would like to just tell the board that this is just a fraction of what is happening within each division, and so, and I have restricted the Deans to 500 words, so that's, that's about it.
Did they make that?
Yeah.
I want to just thank the Deans for doing this, but I know, you know, you're busy people and sitting down and tracking everything you've been doing over the last, well, since you did the last one. I think it's a great document, really shows the good things that are happening at the college, and I just want to thank you for taking the time to put something like this together. I think it's very informative. I actually think it's the best one you've done. They've all been good, but I think this one is especially good one. So, just thanks for, thanks for putting this together.
Well, again, it's the Dean's being part of the solution. You know, communication has continually come up in the surveys as a concern, and while I understand limitations put onto you, maybe we should get after her. But, but really, it's important that we do highlight the exceptional things that are going on and the exceptional work that your staffs are doing. It's a time to really, you know, shine that spotlight, and so, I do know it's one more thing for you to do. I appreciate the fact that you do take the time and realize the significance of communication on this campus because it is important and advancement count, I mean, it helps, it empowers us to do our jobs. So, again, thank you very much, and I hope that this will continue to be a constructive mechanism moving forward.
Thank you.
Dean Wendell, several reports, talk about that new simulation lab you have down there. Would it be possible for the board to take a tour of that, or could we come down and look, it sounded like pretty.
You were on our agenda, we're just waiting for the final sign off.
Great.
And I think we hope to have it by before the end of the year, so probably can, it's not gonna be.
Yeah, sounds wonderful.
That's the simulation, the burn stuff, it would be a little bit more complicated.
Yeah, look forward to it, thanks.
You have a letter I've included in your packet from Grinter Place Friends for the work that our HVAC students are doing. I think this is, you know, significant for HVAC and also for Dean Cliff Smith over there, so. And then I've got some updates to give you on my report, if I can get into that. My report included the, the kind of unofficial letter from NATF, for the National Automotive Technicians Education Foundation. Yesterday, I received an official letter from them, and basically what they're saying is the results indicate your program continues to meet the requirements for NATF master accreditation, which is the highest level that we can get. So, that is fantastic. They're going to be sending us a plaque within the next six to eight weeks, saying that we have achieved master accreditation. So, congratulations again to Dean Cliff Smith and his faculty for that.
Wonderful.
And the other issue is the HLC. Dr. Sung Kim Min and I submitted a proposal to make a presentation at the annual conference for the Higher Learning Commission, and I got an email, I think it was late last week, saying that out of the 390 submissions, they accepted 150 of them for the annual session, and ours is one of them. So, we will be presenting in April, Dr. Sung Kim Min and I, and it'll be on the degree qualifications profile. They were just very impressed with the work that we've been doing, so, thank you. And then, one more thing, HLC had asked us to, those of us who are participating in the Cohort 3 for the Degree Qualifications Profile, to submit to a, responses to a survey from the National, let me get the name right, the National Institute for Learning Outcomes Assessment, NIO, it's called. And we did that in September, and yesterday I received an email from them saying that they have selected Kansas City Kansas Community College to be featured in their monthly newsletter for the work that we're doing with the degree qualifications profile. So, Dr. Min and I have to prepare a short paragraph to send to them, and then they're going to link it to some of our activities. So, that is, I'll let you know when we are featured, the month that we're featured.
Are you and Dr. Min doing a road show, is that what you're working?
Yeah.
Just putting together some kind of a program nationwide. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. I'd be happy to answer any questions on my report that you may have.
Just, excuse me, just a comment, I was really pleased to read all the activities going on with the Developmental Education Council.
Yes.
Looking forward to maybe an interim report next month or so, because it really sounded like you're doing some great things.
Yeah.
I know it's a big interest for all of us.
Yeah, hopefully, maybe by January or February, we'll, I will ask Dr. Kelly to come in. She's doing a great job.
It looks really good, I'm impressed.
And the T4E grant, we have advertised, and we will be interviewing, hopefully, I think next week, we've got some interviews scheduled for a project manager. We hope to have that person onboard in January and gradually kind of, you know, transition the individual in and to take over, because currently I've been the liaison in acting as a project manager. I've had really good relations with the federal project officer who's in charge of the grant, and once we get a new grant manager in, then I will gradually transition that person in to take over. So, but it's going well. Things are going well.
Thank you, Dr. Aga Jafar.
I move acceptance of her, of the report.
Second.
It's been moved a second to accept the report. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Mr. Bodie.
Thank you. First off, not on the agenda, but I would like to introduce Kim Fulton. Kim, would you please stand up? Kim is a new college nurse, perhaps one of the most unique positions on my staff. Takes care of students, faculty, visitors, staff. It is a, and does not just flu shots and not just setting up those kind of things, but Kim is our health, our health advisor. Kim is our health, our health advisor across the board. And our nursing department, our, our, our college nurse does health fairs and makes sure people understand those things that we need to do to make ourselves healthier. Heidi Leff, we are thrilled to have Kim come to us, a Wyandotte County resident. We're very pleased to have Kim with us and I wanted to welcome her today.
Shh. Casey, K C C grad. Now I have to get whipped by Shirley later, sorry.
I'd also like to introduce Valerie Stamberski. Y'all know her. Valerie is the head women's basketball coach, but Valerie has also stepped up and she is now the interim athletic director as we do our search across the country to, to look for a new athletic director. And we are very pleased and proud to have Valerie join in this capacity.
Thank you.
Valerie, first of all, if you would, I'd like to hear some comments from you on just how you plan to approach your tenure. What, what things are you targeting for improvement even as we are in the hiring process?
First of all, I want to thank you guys for the opportunity. I'm extremely excited about this position. I've been working here for fourteen years as the women's basketball coach and I just, I love the athletic department. I love the community college. And I think that one of the first things that we're going to target is just making sure that all the programs are doing what they need to do to move the school forward. We've invested a lot of money up on the north end of campus and I think that our athletic department is really going to benefit from that. One of the things that I mentioned to Mr. Bodie in the interview process was just accountability and responsibility from the coaches for graduation of their students, placement to a four-year school so they can go and write as juniors, fundraising, those type of areas are what I'm looking to target right off the bat, so.
And see how I can ask this without, but having been a part of the coaching staff as long as you have and I'm sure have a good rapport with your fellow coaches, but if the need arises for there to be some action that would be perhaps a disciplinary measure, you have no qualms in being able to fulfill that responsibility carrying out?
No, none whatsoever. I think that the colleagues that I work with are excited about the change as well and they'll be very open to anything that I have to say to them. So I have no qualms about doing that whatsoever.
Okay, just wanted that to be out. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you again for this opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll get the volleyball team as their class ends and they gather up and then they're going to come in and then we got them until the next class starts at nine thirty. So we're going to have to slide that in. Luckily, it's right in the same timeframe. So I'll go to my report if I could until the volleyball team gets here. I, I gave you a written report and it had some updates. I did have some new updates on the construction. We had a meeting yesterday about the construction here on campus. Turf for the baseball field and, and the boundary lines and the batting cages and stuff is supposed to arrive Thursday. They're getting the final grade, the final pack on that. And so that should start late this week, early next week, putting down the Astro, well, not Astro turf, the artificial turf in the, in the rest of the areas there. On the north concession bathroom building, the interior painting has been done, everything's hung. They're just about ready, heat's on, lights are on and everything. The only thing that isn't in yet is the rubber flooring in the locker rooms and the rubber flooring that comes out into the, to the dugout area. They're working on that being a heat and cold sensitive product. On the south restroom and concession stand, BPU did get the transformer set last week. We have electricity now. We have, sanitary sewers have been connected. That's all a brand-new development. There was no, no piping down there. So the sanitary sewers have been connected. The storm sewers are, are ready to go in, but we're waiting for the downspout stuff to get the storm sewer put together. The roofs are done, the soffits aren't, the soffits are getting ready to get prepared. After those two things happen, they'll put all the downspouts on. The final grade is done, the, at the, at the ball field, between the track and, and the ball field. The retaining walls are both up, the one behind home plate, the long concrete wall that you'll see between the two dugouts, it will get stained to be a little prettier. So it's not just gray concrete. Striping on the track is supposed to begin Thursday also. Again, it's a complicated task. You have to have a surveyor in and the surveyor is laying out all of the lines and the straight line and especially in the corners where the curves go. So they have a surveying team that comes in at the same time as the striping machine is there so that they can lay all of those stripes on the, on the track the right way. But other than that, fencing continues and mid-January, I think everything will be done. The turf is taking well in the outfield. It's getting its root system, so we're very happy.
Is that them?
Ladies, please come in.
Can I make an announcement?
Sure, tomorrow's going to.
Just a quick announcement while we're waiting. I'd like to invite the board to the nurses' pinning on December seventeen at seven o'clock in the field house. December seventeen at seven o'clock in the field house.
You'll send us a reminder on that last room?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
You said the field house?
Yes, sir.
Another construction update. At the Tech One building and in the plaza, the plaza is almost completely done. In fact, we are looking at the possibility of starting to move equipment and step into the plaza over the holiday break. The design, the exterior package is being run through the city again on drainage and things like that. We're, we're doing that. You wouldn't recognize the inside, the big box, even where a month ago you could look across the building from one end to the other, you can't anymore. The walls are going in rapidly, the studs. A very complicated system of tying twelve-foot walls to thirty-foot ceilings. They did a heck of a job of doing that where we built some thirty-foot tall walls to meet the roof and, and the ceiling supports. And then put shorter ones in around that and tied them together. It's been a really unique process so that we don't have walls that are swaying once they get there. Mary, are you about ready?
Yeah, we got about six or seven.
I'm sorry?
We got about six or seven. How'd that work?
More that are coming or?
I think this is going to be about it.
Okay. Well, then, it is my pleasure to introduce Coach Mary Bruno, the KC K C C volleyball team and her players, please, up here, because I want Coach Bruno to go to the podium and introduce her players, please. Y'all know our first trip to the Nationals and a sixth-place finish in Nationals for our volleyball team and we're really proud of our, of our volleyball team. Mary, take it, please.
Yeah, you can go ahead and sit if you guys want. And then when I call your name, go ahead and stand. The first one here is a sophomore, Chelsea Sheldon Medina. She is from Waukesha, Wisconsin. She's a six-three right side for us. Second is a sophomore, Lisa Angelo, five-ten from Lansing, Kansas. Third is a sophomore, a five-nine outside, Courtney Gunnels, from here, Kansas City, Kansas. Then we have a freshman, Rachel Repelogal, who is from Omaha, Nebraska. She plays defense for us. Sarah, Amber, come on. Then the next one is a six-four freshman from Kansas City, Kansas, Kenya Alexander. She was middle, she was freshman of the year for the Jayhawk Conference for us also. The next one is Jenny Kinsella. She is from Kansas City, Missouri. She's a Southern, she's a sophomore. The next one is Sarah Mertens. She is a sophomore from Omaha, Nebraska. And the last one here is Amber. She is a sophomore and she's from Iowa. This is one of my assistants, Ally Ward, and I am Mary Bruno.
Thank you, Mary. Do you have a presentation? I take it?
This is one of our trophies that we got for the District N Championship that we received. There is two districts in the Jayhawk Conference that get to go to Nationals, District N and District M, and we were in the District N Finals and ended up winning. We, our first round matchup there was against Lincolnland Community College, round of sixteen, then they go top eight. We won our first round and ended up playing Cowley Community College, which is actually from our own conference, which was kind of disappointing for us because they were the number-one ranked team in the nation at that point. So it was going to be pretty difficult for us to get past them. We did take them to four sets, ended up losing. We turn around, played a very good Iowa Central team for, to get a chance to play for fifth place. We beat them, got the opportunity for play for fifth against Central Community College, ended up losing that in three, but did end up placing sixth in the nation in Junior College Nationals. So that's a pretty big deal for us and we're very, very excited and proud of our girls and the accomplishments that they've had along the, along the year.
Fantastic. We share in your enthusiasm. I would like to hear from the sophomores, what your plans are, if you'd come up, go up to the podium and, and let us know what you're, what you're going to be doing, right? This is important because, and I hope, I really, I'm still bothered by the one presentation by a student. You know, tell us how your time at KC K C C has been.
Yeah, you'll have to pick it up. Not many of us are that tall.
KCK, oh, I moved eight hours away from home and it was amazing. I mean, best decision I've ever made in my life to come down here and it definitely changed my life, made me grow up a lot more and then grew in volleyball and just grew in life, I guess. After this year, I'm not sure if I'm going to continue playing or what, or if I'm just going to go home, but it's all up in the air right now.
Well, you're getting your associates.
Yeah.
And?
I hope.
Coach?
That's what we're going for.
Winners on the court and in the classroom, right?
Oh, yes.
What, what are you working towards? What is that?
I'm working towards criminal justice area field. So I might go home and do the police academy, get that on.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm, I'm not sure if I'm going to play or not, but I want to go on to a four-year and finish my elementary education major.
Great, yeah, all right. I'm going to hire her.
I'm a girl.
Okay, great.
Last year, I actually went to Ottawa University and I transferred here and I'm really, really glad and I had a really good time. And next semester, I'm transferring to Kansas State University.
Okay, congratulations. Majoring in?
Pre-pharmacy.
Okay, great.
I'm Jenny. I'm a sophomore. I really liked it here. I like all the girls. Everyone here is kind of like my family now. Field House is a really good environment for everybody. I'm doing elementary education. I'm not really sure where I'm going, but I want to go somewhere and play if they'll take me. But, yeah, I could hear.
All right.
How tall are you, young lady? You? Yeah, how tall are you?
Five-five.
Five-five.
Am I tall?
You play softball? Stand up, black girl, stand up. I guess you needed.
That's great. Go ahead.
Well, Jenny has little high-ups. I loved coming here. I wanted to move somewhere warm. That didn't really happen. But I definitely loved coming here and the experiences it brought to me and opened my eyes just a little bit. Next year, I'm looking to actually play on. I'm looking at several different colleges to see, I actually got a call from one this morning. And so just seeing what will happen and where God will take me. Thank you.
What are you majoring in?
And I'm majoring, looking into majoring in English to teach high school students and be a coach, but I may stick with my journalism degree here because I'm getting my associate since next May.
All right. Okay.
Hi, I've loved being a part of the KCK volleyball team. It's been a blast, especially this year. We've just had like a really good group and I love them so much. But I have like a general arts degree and, but next year, or even in the summer, I'm going to start going to World Revival School of Ministry, which is in Lee Summit, Missouri. So I want to stick around this area because I like it here, so I'll be sticking around.
Okay, all right.
And we have one more latecomer, Tara Van Beek, sophomore.
Hi, I'm Tara. I really liked it here. We're all like a big family. We all hang out all the time. It was really fun playing with all these girls. Everyone's really good. I plan to go on to a four-year, not sure where yet, still checking out my options. And I want to be in physical education.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, I'd like to thank them all. I hope they know how proud the college is of them. I saw a couple of you about, I don't know, it must have been, oh, here we go. The good thing about dealing with students when they're coming and you know they've been in class and they're on their way to class, so that's, it's good news, so.
Two more. Kristen Patton was a freshman to us, for us, and Jade Young was a redshirt for us and will be returning next year.
Oh, so returned.
We're really, we're really proud of you. We thank you for coming today. You've made the college and the whole community proud. And probably shouldn't say this, but the reason they got Cowley is they didn't want another Kansas, Kansas national championship. They could have easily put you in as the number eight seed instead of nine. You'd have been in the other bracket, but I think we scared the national committee. Last year, they had Johnson County and Cowley County in the Nationals. I don't think they wanted to prove to the country once again that the two best volleyball programs in the country were both in the same state, both in the same conference. And so I think that if I had a nickel, I would bet that they shortchanged you. But we are proud of you and we thank you for being here today very much. Thank you.
Very much.
And Alan wants a picture of y'all, so if you would all stand quickly and kind of get together and Mary, get in there, please. I'd say tall ones in front, but I'm just not going to enter that conversation.
Everybody looked happy here. You know all is done. We've done this before. Okay, hold it. One more, just to make sure, on three, one, two, three.
Thank you very much. Do well in your finals, please. They're not a group, we have to tell that, too.
I think that will conclude my report.
It's pretty easy to end with great news like that or I will answer any of your questions about my report.
As for a motion for approval of? No move?
Second.
Did we get a second?
Yeah.
It's been moved a second to accept Vice President Bodie's report. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay.
of the, of the electrical usage report that wasn't here in time before we published the agenda.
Has, has been reviewed again. We, we continue to have good news on the electric, electrical usage. Uh, also, uh, on the, um, budget report, you'll see that we should be at about 58%. We stand at 62%, so we appreciate, again, uh, the work of the deans in keeping with, not only within budget, but having us a little spare change, um, very important. And, uh, so I ask that you approve, uh, the financial report.
No move.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to accept item B, financial reports. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And then I ask for your approval of recommend, recommendations, um, 10C, 1 and 2.
No move.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve item C, 1 and 2. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you very much.
Committee reports. Any committee would like to report out? Hearing none. Um, General Counsel, we need an executive session for how long?
15 minutes, Mr. Chairman.
Need a motion to go into executive session for 15 minutes? No move. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you very much.
Committee reports. Any committee would like to report out? Hearing none. Um, General Counsel, we need an executive session for how long?
15 minutes, Mr. Chairman.
Need a motion to go into executive session for 15 minutes? No move. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And, and Mr. Chairman, you, you're going in there for the purpose of discussing potential acquisition of real estate with action to follow, and to discuss non-elected personnel matters with action to follow, and you're in there to protect, uh, the privacy interests of the individual involved.
Been moved and seconded that we go into executive session for the purposes of discussing potential land acquisition, I'm sorry, real estate acquisition, and, uh, discussion on non-elected personnel matters. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Let's have a meeting back to order.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that we authorize President Givens to, uh, execute agreement for land acqui, real estate, uh, acquisition, uh, with the, um, review of legal counsel.
Seconded. Heard the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Unfinished business.
There was one thing that I, that, and Wendell just spoke to me about, uh, that was in my report. The governor has asked every one of the state agencies to prepare a budget with a 10% cut. We may have to live with that. Um, they're working on it right now. State's $700 million short revenue already on their projection. I ask that each of you continue to try to influence your legislative, um, contacts, that the community college plays a major role in the development of this economy, um, and a 10% cut at, from the state level, even though they only give us about 20% of our money, you know what that will hurt, that we get nearly $10 million. A million-dollar cut to our budget from the state would be a significant detriment. I don't know from the K through 12 perspective, but I suspect that's going to be impacted heavily also. But I ask that you continue to speak with your legislators to make sure they understand that the community college is a, an engine for the economy and not a drag to the economy. Um, and, and we are very concerned. The business officers had a meeting, and we had one of the legislators in, who on a condition that we don't tell everybody who he is and what he said, told us it's gonna be ugly. So please keep talking to your contacts about, uh, the importance of their support to community colleges. Thank you.
Brian, how come we didn't, uh, we had discussed it one time about having, um, the legislators to come in while we go to their meeting if they head out to the, um, 82nd and Quin, 82nd and parallel to the library? And then it was just, I guess, kinda, I don't know, but, uh-
I do not remember, ma'am.
Okay.
I know, I know what you, I remember what you talked about.
We, we discussed that, but since I brought it up, I guess y'all can't remember, but anyway.
As I remember, we checked on the date, and it had already occurred by the time you brought it.
I remember.
Okay, but we could've had a session for them, for us, Dr. Givens? That's, that's possible. I do it every year for other groups.
That was not requested. But we did have that here on campus, though. They were on campus. We've had the legislators twice.
All of them?
Yeah.
And who, who was speaking to them?
The community.
Oh, okay. I didn't know nothing about that.
It was sponsored by the chamber.
Oh. Well, the chamber was speaking to them. The people in, in the, I mean, the people in the chamber was speaking to-
No, it was, it was the community.
I didn't know nothing about that.
But the budget picture is grim, um, from, from, one thing, and it, and we're still, that I did not know, that 10% cut that comes to all those state agencies, um, that is for agencies whose money is appropriated directly through those agencies, like ours is through Kansas Board of Regents. It does not impact the universities. So they would be excluded from it, and that, um, caught all of our attention as perhaps, um, needing to be addressed.
One question, Mr. Bodie. Is this, is this in the governor's budget?
Well, he hasn't proposed a budget yet. He won't do that till he gets a State of Kansas, um, speech on, but that is what his director of, of the budget has directed each of the state agencies to provide him a budget with a 10% cut.
Okay.
As of the last legislative, um, update on revenues, I hope it stays there.
Yeah, I think, I'd say in anticipation of the shortfall due to the-
Tax cut.
Tax reform, yes. And it, I mean, they're already predicting that it's, 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 it's gonna hit, and it's gonna hit in the next few years, yeah.
Okay. Under unfinished business, I'd like to bring up, um, the, uh, technology issue that we've discussed on several different occasions for, for the Board of Trustees. Uh, had a discussion with Dr. Givens about this, um, Trustee Daniels, as well as, uh, Dean Abby Lennon, uh, about where we go from here. And I think we're at the point where we have to make a decision on, on, on moving forward on this, and I'd like to propose a special meeting, um, preferably next Monday, if possible, either at noon or, uh, an, an afternoon or evening meeting, um, around 4:00, uh, next Monday. And at that time, uh, I'd like to ask Baz to give us a summary presentation on, on what he's proposing, and at that time, come to some consensus so that we can move forward on this. So, um, Peggy, could you take it from here and, and see if you can set up a meeting for us next Monday?
That's the pinning, sir.
I can do it at 4:00.
The nurses' pinning is at 7:00.
Right, right. Preferable for 4:00, yeah.
I can't, yeah, I definitely can't do it at noon or-
I can't do it noon.
You can't do a meeting?
How come we can't come, uh, how long's it gonna take? An hour? Hour and a half?
Yeah, hour, hour or less. It just depends on how many questions.
Okay, the nurses' pinning is at night?
At 7:00.
At 7:00?
Okay, then how come we can't come at 5:00?
How about 5:30?
5:30?
5:30?
Then we'll already be here for the nurses' pinning.
Is that enough advance notice?
It's enough advance notice.
Is it enough advance notice? Do we have to? So, 5:30?
Okay, 5:30 next Monday.
The Board of Trustees have a meeting at 5:30 on December 7th, uh-
7th.
17th, I'm sorry. December 17th, uh, in order to, uh, discuss technology needs of the campus community.
And make sure you have a little snack.
Is that for the campus community, or is that for the Board of Trustees?
Board of Trustees.
Oh, it's for, just for the board?
Just for the board.
Oh, okay, just for the board. And it'll be a special meeting, Trustee Rios, and it'll be for the purposes you described, and with action being taken at this meeting, or is it just consideration and discussion?
You know, we-
Baz, what you gonna have for?
I think, I think we should take action.
All right, so it's, it's action as well, and this is as detailed as it is, because the special meeting, you have to indicate the purpose and indicate what it will be used for. And so if you decide not to take action, at least you would've noticed it up. So that's what it's for, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
I moved it to have to be seconded.
Okay. We have a second?
It's been, it's been seconded with, with the-
Okay, you've heard the motion, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Make sure you got a snack now.
Entertained a motion to adjourn?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Motion to adjourn?
For a meal before they-
No move.
Have a second?
Baz, I need to see you quickly.
Moving seconded, we adjourn. Need to adjourn.